All right, we're live.
We're live, okay, well, welcome everyone to tonight's planning commission meeting of March 25th, 2021. Kelly, can you do roll call, please?
Mr. Capuzzi.
Present.
Mr. Reardon.
Present.
Ms. Dobbs.
Here.
Mr. Shannon.
Present.
Mr. Fear de Mondo.
Here.
Mr. Garrett.
Present.
And Ms. Phillips.
Okay.
muted for present.
Julia, you're muted, no more.
I'll ask everyone to join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. Did I see Dennis O'Neal? I do, I did see Dennis O'Neal lurking in the background there. I guess Dennis, you're here for 1315 Lawrence Road?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Okay, what do you got to say?
First, good evening, my name is Dennis O'Neal, I'm an engineer with Herbert McCumbie's office, and I'm here tonight on behalf of Michael Mardenley is the owner of 1315 Lawrence Road. In 2019, Mr. Mardenley subdivided 1315 Lawrence Road to give a piece or sell a piece of property to have for their addition. At the time, Mr. Mardenley was considering a land development on 1315 site, and we had requested some relief through some landscaping sections of the ordinance, specifically 182 718B1, which requires front yard landscaping, and 182 718D1, which requires a landscape plan for other green areas of the site. Since then, due to social and economic issues, the land development has not moved forward. The folks at Have for Mr. Storage would like to close out their project, and in order to guarantee that this work was done, we established escrow for these plantings. So, we're here tonight to let the planning commission know that Mr. Mardenley and Have for Mr. Storage are going to honor their commitment to meet these two sections of the ordinance that were put into escrow and were asked to be delayed, since we're not prepared at this time to move forward with the land development for that property. Tuesday night, or Monday night, we attended the Shade Tree Commission. They approved our plans with some modifications to a couple of species of trees, and if I could share my screen, Kelly, I can put up the plan.
While you're doing that, and speaking of the Shade Tree Commission, I did ask the Chair of the Shade Tree Commission to send me over any of their comments or what their findings were of the plan. They said that the plan does meet the requirements of Shade Tree Ordinance, Chapter 170. No existing trees that require replacement are on the site, and the plan shows more than 10 shade trees required. They recommend that the property owner ensure that the species don't interfere with the overhead power lines, and that they encourage the diverse planting.
Thank you. As you can see from the plan, the site has a lot of impervious area. There's very little green area on the site, and it's further encumbered the section to the top of the plan. Let's see if I get my cursor in there, right over in this area where my cursor is. That is encumbered by the EPA cap, so there's very little planting area on the site that we can plant. So in order to meet our front yard planting strip, we're proposing some small deciduous trees, eastern red bud, dogwood, ironwood, and a Japanese maple. Mixed in there for some flowering and some regular deciduous trees. And then further back off the street, they asked us to use a Norway spruce as the evergreen component for that. In addition to that, our interpretation of 718D requires us to have a landscape plan for the rest of the property because there's so little area to plant. We are proposing a buffer along the driveway that services the Swiss Farms and the pizza shop there of evergreen plantings, and I believe there are, yes, there are Green Emerald, Arbividee, and that's to provide some plantings on the site and screening to those neighbors towards Eagle Road. So we are also proposing a fence, and I have a picture of the fence. Along Lawrence Road, some of the evergreen trees will be behind it. The deciduous trees will be along the front of the fence. The fence is six foot high, so we are going to be required to go to the zoning hearing board to get approval for a six foot high fence in a front yard. We feel that it's important to have something that tall because there's a very steep slope directly behind the fence, which slopes down probably about 12 to 14 feet, and we want to make sure no one can access those slopes and accidentally take a fall down there. So, we felt it was best to go to the zoning hearing board and seek some relief for the height of the fence. But essentially, that's our plan, and we're moving, we'd like to move forward with getting those plantings in, especially now that we have some good weather coming with spring. So I think we're on the next zoning hearing board schedule for the fence, and if we're successful here tonight, we probably could get started with the plantings. That's all I have. Mr. Capuzzi, I can answer any questions you may have.
Sure, Julia, why don't you go first? You have any questions?
No, not for this.
Jack Garrett?
No, thank you, sir.
Okay, Maggie?
Yeah, so I guess I just wanted to clarify, so no land development is being proposed at this time, but we're seeing the landscaping come in. Is this landscaping coming in just on a temporary measure? Or would this, I guess the question is, if there were to be land development in the future, would this landscaping then interfere in any way with the future land development plan?
It would not, it's being placed cognizant of the fact that there are some future plans for the site, and they're placed along the boundary lines so that we wouldn't have to move them in the future.
Right, so I guess, Kelly, do we have any kind of requirement that you would be able to see a development from the roadway into the site, since this will create a pretty continuous buffer, landscaping buffer, which is, you know, right now, good to kind of shield the site, but in the future, if it's redeveloped for something, do we want to have more sightlines into the property? And would this planting plan interfere with that?
No, we don't have a regulation for that, but, and actually vice versa, because this property is zoned light industrial, I think that having a buffer that shields it from the residential district on the other side of Lawrence Road makes more sense to visually block it from those areas.
Okay, and then, did the Shade Tree Commission provide any feedback on the species selection in regards to its resiliency against the spotted lanternfly?
Not that I'm aware of. It was a very quick turnaround, their meeting was only on Monday night. So I did just get a very brief summary, but they did not mention anything.
Okay, I would just want to make sure that whatever species we select would not be considered a host plant for spotted lanternfly. I'm not, I feel like, I mean, the spruce is probably not, I guess my only question would be the Arbor Vidae, maybe, but I'm not a landscape architect to be able to say for sure. So if we could just verify that, otherwise, I have no other questions. So, thank you.
Thanks, Maggie. David? David there?
Trying.
Okay, there you are, you're on mute.
No questions, thank you.
Okay, Rob?
Yeah, I guess it's a bigger picture than what's being presented here, but is there some kind of a master plan of the site that I'm missing? In that, I understand that you're doing this landscaping, I understand that you're being very cognizant of the site, but what I see is a building there, and I see this building slowly getting renovated into something. Is there some intended use for that building?
Do you know that there is a land development plan or land development concept that's been discussed for a couple of years now? Most of the work that's been done to the building is more to save it from becoming more decayed and unsafe. Building, when Mr. Mardenley took it over, was just filled with old auto parts and
I remember.
myriad of stuff that he cleaned out, and as they were cleaning it out, they found problems with the building. So they started doing work, one, in anticipation of moving forward with the land development, but two, to make sure the building was safe to inhabit. Because they do have an existing nonconforming use on the site that they could continue to use it for.
Okay, I'm just, I'm thinking if that building was to be used as a, an office building of some sort, would the site be able to handle that use? And I don't know where that site's going based on what I'm seeing, as far as how it's being developed slowly. That's all.
Well, it is light industrial, I think the uses would be more towards the light industrial side rather than office or commercial. There was a concept presented at one point to try to figure out if there was a way to provide pedestrian access from Lawrence Road to the second floor of the building. But that wasn't deemed feasible at the time because of the building. So, again, it's very conceptual at this point, but it's set up for light.
If I understand, also looking at the drawing, that's a retaining wall that's wrapping around the site there? It's like, it's like, okay. And I understand the retaining wall to the, at the bottom, but is that also a retaining wall there at kind of mid-site? It's like a rectangular piece?
More of a Jersey barrier. It's a barrier setup because the top portion of the site where the cap is is currently used as, it's leased to one of the towing companies to store cars in.
Yeah, I'm familiar with the site. Okay, thank you, I don't have any further questions. Chuck Rieden?
You know, this is rather interesting because, for whatever it's worth, I've known this site for a long, long time, and I understand what you're trying to do, and it is an interesting piece of property because of the way it slopes. And the retaining walls, as brought out by Rob, are, you know, a critical factor in the entire property. I don't have questions beyond that, I appreciate everybody else's questions up to this point because they are germane. Thank you, done.
Thank you. Dennis, real quick, none of the proposed trees along Lawrence Road are in the right of way, correct?
That is correct.
The Arbor Vidae that run down the common property line there, do you know the initial height of those?
Six to eight feet.
Six to eight feet, okay, and is the fence, is there a fence along there also, or no?
No, the fence runs down the other side of the driveway.
Okay. The detail you have for the fence, I assume that's some type of aluminum fencing material?
Yes, it's aluminum.
Do you know how big the fence posts are?
I do not.
I would suggest you go, it looks like they're 10-foot sections, more or less?
Yes.
I would suggest you go with like, at least a four-inch or three-inch square fence post for those. Only because, you know, there's a lot of traffic along that area, pedestrian traffic, and you want to put something up that's not going to get damaged easily. And I was passed there the other day, it looks like there is some activity. I guess they're grading that area out, getting ready to put landscaping in?
Yes.
Okay. All right, my final question, and I don't know if you know the answer to this, but part of the resolution that approved the addition to Mr. Storage had provisions for open space, part of which was taken care of by some access easements, but also I think there was supposed to be a contribution to the open space fund. Do you know if that took place?
I do not know if the contribution took place.
Kelly, were you able to check that?
We did, that was actually, that portion of it was waived by the Board of Commissioners because the Mr. Storage property had very, very recently already contributed quite a bit of money towards the open space funds in their land development in 2015. So they felt that the easement for the trail was adequate.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, do we have to take some type of action on this?
Yeah, I mean, this is essentially just cleaning up some of the conditions that were going to be addressed otherwise, so we'll need to recommend approval or denial with whichever conditions for the Board of Commissioners.
Okay, anyone care to make a motion?
Angelo, I think you need to do that.
Come on, guys, don't be bashful. All right, I'll make a motion that we recommend the fencing and landscaping plan for 1315 Lawrence Road. We recommend that plan to be approved by the Board of Commissioners.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and second it. Anybody have any questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none. Kelly, could you take roll, please?
Sorry, Mr. Capuzzi.
Yes.
Mr. Reardon.
Yes.
Ms. Dobbs.
Yes.
Mr. Shannon.
Yes.
Mr. Fear de Mondo.
Yes.
Mr. Garrett.
Yes.
And Ms. Phillips.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Dennis.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is the 900 North Eagle Road, I guess the expansion of the groundwater treatment facility at the Haver Town Superfund site. And I see some names up there that, I see Josh Barber, Josh is with EPA, correct?
Correct.
Okay, you're here to present the plan?
I am here to provide an overview of the plan, and my compatriots will help me to provide any details of the plan, of which I do not have the best explanation for.
Okay.
Actually, Eduardo Rivera, who is my EPA counterpart with EPA, he's the on-scene coordinator who's implementing, the current phase of the work is on the line. As I mentioned before, I think the last time we were before the board, or before the commission, we have a combination of efforts right now for the site between EPA's remedial program, which I represent, and our removal program, both of which are under Superfund. But we are coordinating with regards to the work that's been ongoing since we began the response action in the residential area. And Eduardo represents the removal side of the house, and I'm remedial. And then also Liz Piazza is on the line, she is with Tetra Tech, and they are a support contractor to EPA, both the removal and the remedial program.
Okay, so you want to give a quick overview, or you just want to turn it over to Liz? It's up to you.
Oh, sure, I mean, I'm not just eye candy, so I'll have to provide a few words, and and then we'll see how it goes. So, just to refresh everybody's memory, the groundwater treatment plant that we have at the site has been there for quite some time, and it's currently undersized. And with the response work that EPA undertook for the residential area, several residential properties on Rittenhouse Circle, we are going to be increasing the amount of groundwater that we're collecting, and a plant that's already undersized is going to be unable to treat the additional capacity. We have addressed nine residential properties, waterproofed them, we put in a few additional outdoor spring seep sumps and a groundwater, another secondary groundwater collection area, and then there's one more large component that's going to be going in. And I'm sorry, I don't have a map to point at my EPA computer. You know, the government's finest laptop decided to quit on me right before, so all my files are on that. But I know Liz has the files that she can, or the maps that she can share. But I know that everybody knows this area well. So we're at a point where the residential work is wrapping up, thanks to Eduardo and his group, and thank you, Liz. And we're now getting to a point where the preparations for the expansion of our treatment plant are ready to move forward. Initially, one thing that I do want to touch on is the original plan was to, currently you can see the outline of the existing building on this plan. It's the skinnier rectangle inside the larger one, that is our existing plan. And originally, we had planned to partially remove a few portions of walls to create accessways into an extension of this building, and try to preserve the structure and then essentially build over and around it. We have since determined that that would not be practical, nor would it be from an engineering standpoint wise or even safe in the long term. So the plans now are to fully demolish that structure and then construct a new expanded building that will still be within the variance that we were already granted from the property line setback. And that's represented by the larger structure that you can see that's outlined there now. And the focus of the plans that were submitted, this is just the nature of, as I mentioned, you know, we have a remedial program, which is the slower part of Superfund, the bigger cleanup part, and the removal part, which is represented by Eduardo. And because of that, we have really two different designs that we're working on. And the first design focuses on the work that Eduardo's program needs to implement. So there's parts, and really what that focuses on is the demolition of the existing building, the construction or the expansion of the building to a larger extent, only in a temporary building form, and then installing the updated larger equipment inside the building. Items like additional recovery wells or landscaping and frontage requirements, we talked about this last time, we're very well aware of it, and that is stuff that will be addressed. The substantive requirements from the township will be addressed, but that would be addressed under our second design, basically our Phase 2 design. And the reason why there's two designs is ostensibly, we can't hand a design to a construction contractor and say, build this, but don't build that. Trying to exclude components from a design would be quite challenging and an opportunity for confusion. It also would be delaying the work by trying to get the entire design done now. What we really need to provide is the final design, along with the coordination with the township, so that Eduardo's program can continue with the time-critical action that they're performing right now, so that we can ensure that we're protecting human health and the environment. We have, like I said, we have additional recovery wells that are going to go in. Right now, we have additional water coming from residential sumps, and it's imperative that in order to be able to pump the amount of water that's needed at any given time, that we expand the treatment plant as quickly as possible so that we can make sure that we're protecting the public health. That, and so really the focus of the document that was submitted and the drawings that were provided focuses on that. We received the comments from the township today, and I appreciate the quick turnaround time that was given to that document, and we're reviewing the comments now. And I think both Liz and I and Eduardo can speak to different comments to the extent that we reviewed them. So, we just, obviously because it was provided today, I don't think that anybody is really prepared to go through every single one of them, and I think there is many of them that are very straightforward to address, and there's some that we want to look at a little bit closer. But with that, what I wanted to do is stop rambling, and I will pause for any questions initially, because, you know, we're EPA and Superfund, and it's a kind of unique arrangement we have here. And if there's no questions, then I'll let Liz give a little bit more into the nitty gritty.
All right, I'm going to hold questions until everybody's had a chance to speak, but just to be clear, the plan that we're looking at right now is the first stage plan or the final plan?
This is the first stage plan. This is for the removal work. The final stage plan, you do not have all those plans.
But the stormwater management system, is that not designed for the final plan?
I'm sorry, yes, I didn't understand the way you were asking the question, yes. What, everything that we're presenting now is meant to be the final version of what will be out there. The only thing that will be different in the end is the temporary structure would be made permanent, and there will be additional recovery wells to be installed, and final improvements made to the landscaping, the frontage, things like that.
Okay, as far as the review letter is concerned, I agree with you, there's no reason to spend a lot of time going through all these comments. So we only focus on, let's say, those items that you might want to have a clarification on or explanation for. And like I said, why don't you proceed with your presentation, and then the commissioners will ask questions.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so this is Liz Piazza with Tetra Tech, as Josh said. I guess I will pick it up from here and run with a couple of pieces or items that in, initially looking over the comment letter that we received, I'd like to highlight or make sure to make clear. One of them is, as Josh stated, this is really just an expansion of the plant itself to be able to handle the additional capacity that's required for the groundwater treatment function that the site currently has. There is no added traffic anticipated with this development. There is currently, I believe, you know, one operator onsite occasionally, and that would maintain or be the same in the future condition, even with the larger plant facility. So, one of the comments was referring to a traffic impact study and providing that information, but we are not anticipating any additional or change of use for the property. It's just simply to handle the additional capacity. The, as Josh stated, the stormwater management system that we have here in place, obviously as we had presented, the site is constrained really on all sides. We have the private access road that runs back, and we need to maintain that. There is current overhead electric that runs right in front of the proposed, or the existing and proposed building. And then there's electrical equipment for the site itself. So, the main area where we could expand was to the south of the existing building for the expansion, which is why we went to the zoning board and got the release from which is why we went to the zoning board and got the relief from the setback requirement there. And in doing that, we did eat into the stormwater channel. So we proposed two swales, one on the east and west of the site with underground detention running between the two as a conveyance to be able to maximize the area that we have and still maintain the same amount of volume capacity that the existing swell has. That then outlets to the existing 18-inch CMP that runs under Eagle Road and continues out downstream through the YMCA property and out to Neowars Run. I think those were kind of the main items that I really wanted to touch on. As Josh said, you know, in reviewing, there are some of these items that are fairly straightforward, just, you know, additional information or clarification on the plan that we need to add. And then, you know, the landscaping requirements and a few other things we'd be looking to finalize with the phase two side of, set of plans.
Okay, well, if this plan represents what you intend to have the site look like at the end of the project, your landscaping plans have to be part of this application.
So this is not what we, this plan that was provided is what is meant, maybe you're trying to lead me along to answer your original question in the first place. This, the stormwater channel and the plant expansion are meant to be their final state. But this plan does not represent the final conditions with regards to the landscaping or the property border or things of that nature. That would be in the plan that would be submitted as part of the phase two work that we'll be doing under the remedial program.
Okay, but, but we're, we're going to run into the same situation that we had with the previous applicant. We're going to have to have something on record that ties you down to doing a landscaping plan and any other type of plan that might be needed for the ultimate build out, if you will.
Okay, I mean, we
You need to be committed.
It's not the first time I've heard that.
Thank you.
The, I think that there's, you know, we can provide, I have no, I have no hesitancy in providing the plans. My concern is that time is of the essence with regards to what we need to finalize with regards to our plans now. Because this work is to be implemented under the removal program immediately in order to begin the work. And it's, I just, I think that the landscaping will follow. I can provide a letter from myself or someone else that can commit to that or something else of that nature. That is me talking, you know, off the top of my head. That would be satisfactory. We have a commitment to the community and we've, you know, we've been here for a long time. I live in the community. My wife teaches in the community. And, you know, we've done a lot of work and spent millions of dollars, especially over the recent history to address the residential work. So whatever it takes to, short of getting everything into the plan right now, my only concern is just that it would delay things and getting their submission due. Our goal is to get a set of response to comments on the comments received within two weeks. And a revised set of plans within two weeks so that we can be ready for your second meeting in April. And that's my only reason for not fully committing to get the landscaping and everything like that included in this next revision.
Okay, I mean, from, from our perspective, we've been tasked with the responsibility of recommending plans to the Board of Commissioners that are pretty much clean, if you will. We don't have too many outstanding comments from the Township Engineer in regards to his review letter. The other thing I noticed in this plan has been reviewed as a preliminary plan, which means that somehow it's gotten into this two-step process where you have to get a preliminary approval and then a final approval before anything can get done. And that's not going to happen in a month. I mean, you gotta, you gotta be able to present a set of plans that reflects what you want to build as soon as you want to build it, but satisfies all the criteria in the subdivision ordinance. So, I mean, you need to label this plan preliminary final if you're expecting a quick final approval.
Okay.
All right. There's a lot of things that have to happen, Josh, in order for this thing to get through the first, first stage, if you will.
Sure. I guess it's just, I'm struggling with the preliminary filing. Like, it's just the jargon and the phrasing that you use for this. I understand.
It's more than jargon. It's, it's, it's a law. I mean, it's the way the ordinance is written. We can't rewrite the ordinances for you. I understand this is an important project, but, you know, if you, if you do a thorough search in the ordinance, you'll find out that there are methods you can use to expedite this review, but you have to have the information on the plans for us to move it forward.
Well, I think most of the information that's requested in the, in the comment letter is easy to provide. And I think what we can do is we can go back and talk with, we can talk internally with regards to how to move forward. You know, I think with regards to the, the concern that we have is, is beginning the expansion of the plant. And under the removal program, there's authorities there that are, that will allow them to move forward with initiating this work prior to everything being finally stamped and approved. And that's why, you know, I think Eduardo can speak to that in more detail. There's some initial preliminary work that they need to begin with, starting this month. We're looking to actually bring in our temporary plant and start the demolition in late May, mid to late May. But there's some initial work that needs to be done. And Eduardo, I don't know if you want to speak to that a little bit with regards to what, what your needs are and the approach that you're taking here.
Yeah, sure. Again, this is Eduardo with the EPA as well and with the removal program instead of the remedial program. And, you know, the main difference, you know, between the two programs is the authority under, you know, each program actually, you know, does the work. You know, we, under the removal program, we usually, you know, do the work under the emergency authorities. And, you know, based on that, you know, we usually don't have to submit any permits or, you know, wait for approval, you know, if we do submit permits. However, having said that, you know, we always, you know, try to, you know, apply all the different ordinance and different laws of the different, you know, places that we, you know, do a lot of work. And so, yes, you know, we are kind of ready to store, you know, some of these tasks, if you will. And, you know, as far as our timeframe, you know, we are basically, you know, we could store, you know, like yesterday. We were just actually waiting, you know, to have this meeting with you guys to kind of, you know, get your feedback. We know what we would be doing, you know, that it's why we would like to start right away. It's to expand, you know, the area along the south of the building so we could have an area for, you know, staging and an area to be able to, you know, move our heavy equipment there because right now, as Liz was saying, you know, there's basically no real estate, you know, around that building. So that's, that's, you know, what we would be doing right now. I don't know if that's something that, you know, it's okay with you guys, you know, just we could start filling that in. And, you know, in the meantime, you know, we could continue with the approval process.
Do you, you guys have a plan that shows what this interim stage looks like?
I believe that there is one, right, Liz?
Yes, we have the post-construction. Hang on one second. So this is the original settlement control plan where what Eduardo was talking about is starting to place the stabilized construction entrance, placing in here a cofferdam or barrier to start this creation of this swell here. So this area in between can be filled in and used as the staging area. And then another cofferdam area here on this, this side, which would then have a stone berm for filtration before the outlet. So there would be a pump around between the two sections while this area in between is used as staging.
Okay, well, then I suggest that part of your plans include this, this, I'll call it a staging plan. It's, it's not uncommon to have an interim grading plan, if you will, to show temporary conditions while you establish, you know, grades and things like that for your permanent construction. If you had a staging plan or an interim grading plan or something like that that describes that, then I think you're covered both for your initial, your initial work as far and also your final work. And it looks like you have it thought out. Just have to put some notes on a drawing or something.
Yeah, a lot of the information here, I think, just as you said, pulling it out or putting it a little bit clearer is is all that, you know, we would need to do to emphasize that more.
Okay, I mean, it's, it's not uncommon. What you're proposing is not uncommon. We look at the the Linwood Elementary School. School District is building a new school over at Linwood Elementary School. Josh, you should probably be familiar with that part of Township. They had to do the same thing. They had to have an interim plan that shows what the site was going to look like during construction since they're working on a site while trying to maintain part of the, of the existing site. So
Correct.
Maybe, maybe that's an easy way to get, get past this, this little bump here. Okay, so I guess I have a better understanding of what you're, what you're trying to do. Again, it's important that you still, you know, dot the i's and cross the t's as far as the ordinance is concerned. Does Eduardo or Liz or you have anything else you want to say before I open it up to questions?
What's, I guess, you know, my, my, my main question is, you know, it's would we have to wait, you know, until we, you know, get that to you and hear back from you? Or, you know, are you guys okay with us, you know, starting some of the work? And, you know, in the meantime, while we submit everything and hear back from you?
Well, I'm, this is me, my opinion, okay? I'm not speaking for the Township, for the Planning Commission. My opinion, this is a critical operation. So it, I think would be to the Township's benefit to cooperate with you as much as we can in order to keep the, you know, things moving along. Which means that you may have to talk to someone in the codes department or, or or the building department in order to get a, some type of temporary permit to get you started on this thing. And Kelly, I don't know if I'm speaking out of turn or, or whether or not that's possible. But it'd be my thought that Kelly would be the person to speak to or even their Director of Code Enforcement, Joe Celia, in regards to getting a head start on some of this work.
No problem.
They, they did let us know that recently that they were doing some site work. And I did pass that on to Chuck Proctor from Pinoni and from Joe Celia from the Code Enforcement Office. It certainly wouldn't hurt to have some preliminary temporary plans in place that have been reviewed. But, you know, with everything ongoing, I don't know how much those change.
The only issue I can see, I mean, the only major issue I think is you're basically reducing the effective volume of that detention basin that's out there or whatever that, that area is. If you're going to do temporary grading within that area, you're, you're cutting down capacity of, of the facility that's there. So that may or may not be an issue depending upon how long that's going to be.
Yeah, I mean, like, you know, Liz, perhaps, you know, you could correct me if I'm wrong. But, you know, my understanding is that the way that that swell is right now with the grading and, you know, the water that gets there from the road, my understanding is that what we're proposing, it's going to be even better because, you know, right now, the grading is not such that the water actually runs from one side to the other. So it's basically just, you know, standing there and it either, you know, evaporates or just, you know, it's goes down. And I don't think it goes down pretty fast because of the liner. So, you know, with the, with the pump around, I think that, you know, we actually might be actually helping as far as, you know, how fast the water is going to move from that swell.
Again, I'll defer to the Township and the Township Engineer as far as that, that explanation goes. I mean, if that's the case, then it seems like you might have a viable way to, to build what you want to build initially anyhow, while the final plan gets approved.
You know, that's
Chuck Thompson is, Chuck Thompson, I'm sorry. Chuck Proctor.
I was, I was waiting for my opportunity, Mr.
There you go.
Yeah, guys, I agree. I understand the need for this. I understand the critical path for it and everything. And look, if there is temporary things that have to be done, I would suggest we all sit down, myself, Kelly, Joe Celia, and whoever may be, want to be there and discuss that and determine what the best method is for trying to get you to accomplish that while meeting all the applicable requirements.
Yeah, as far as, what I was going to propose on, you know, we could have a meeting on site and, you know, we could go over everything and, you know, could show exactly what we're, you know, kind of planning on doing over there. So we could, you know, have all the, you know, the visual picture, if you will.
Yeah, I think it would be a great idea to maybe get a plan together, like Mr. Capuzzi was saying, a temporary workaround plan with the pumping and all that type of thing. And, and, and give it to us and then we can meet and discuss it. You know, there's all, there's all kinds of things we have some concerns about. Obviously, stormwater is first and foremost there. We want to make sure no one's going to get hurt with that. You know, the noise issue, there is a residential area not far and stuff like that. So it's something that absolutely would be willing to discuss with you and go over. But if you could get us a plan that would show us something, that would be very helpful.
And it doesn't have to be a final engineer plan, at least for the initial discussion. If you can come up with some quick pencil sketches or, or ideas that are fully thought through that you know will work and sit down with the Township folks and, and everybody comes to agreement that, yeah, it, it sounds reasonable, it probably will work, then you can worry about, you know, putting ink to the paper, if you will.
That sounds good. It's, you know, we'll get something to you, you know, by next week. So we could, you know, sit down and go over it.
Okay, I'm going to open up the questions, okay, Josh?
Sure.
Okay. Julie, you want to start?
Um, yes. First, I was just wondering if you guys could clarify in the northwest corner on the other side of the access road, you're showing a pochette area right there. Is that additional asphalt paving that you're adding for those two trailers?
No.
So that it, okay, go ahead, Eduardo. Sorry.
No, no, I mean, I was just going to say, no, that's just an area that we own, you know, where we have our trailers. But I don't think that, you know, there's asphalt.
It's stone. It's crushed stone right now.
Okay. All right, I was just curious. And then, secondly, have you guys considered at all the benefits of adding a green roof to this project, even if it's just one of the lesser expensive tray systems to help with some of your water management and also make the building a little bit more sustainable?
Liz, do you want me to take that or?
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, that, so that, that final, yes, we are looking at different options for the final roof on the structure. The, what Eduardo's going to build will be considered a temporary structure. And when we take over as part of the phase two design, what we call phase two, where we will create the final structure, basically replace what we put there. That's the, some of those things that we are considering now for the final, final roof and other improvements as well.
Okay, so when you're designing the building, if you are considering some form of green roof, you'll take roof, you'll take in the slight extra weight calculate, take into the account for the infrastructure and stuff?
If we were going to do that, yes, absolutely, yeah.
That was all.
Thanks, Julia. Jack? Okay. Maggie, you have any comments?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to thank Julia for her comments about the green roof. I thought that was a really good recommendation. Although the response actually led me to a question that I didn't have before. So the plan is to fully demo the existing building and then there's a, a temporary building being in, being constructed and then is that also being removed entirely and replaced with the final structure? Is that the phasing that we're talking about here?
Uh, the probab-, most likely the, the framing for the temporary structure can be repurposed for the final building. It's more about the, the exterior components of the structure. We're still evaluating which type of temporary, we're looking at a couple of different options with, with regards to that. But generally speaking, it is get rid of the existing, put up the temporary and then replace it in part or whole with the, the final.
Okay. All right.
And just, sorry, just to add to that, and part of that, as Josh was saying, the framing, but the footings and the foundation and the slab and all of the equipment within that temporary structure, if you will, are all staying the same.
Correct.
So the overall footprint that is shown here for the proposed building will not be changed or modified in moving from that phase one temporary exterior side of things to the phase two final building construction, if that helps clarify.
It does, yes, thank you. All right, and I, I recall, Josh, when you were before us, the first time we had, I had asked about the stormwater management, so in terms of how the stormwater system is operating, is there any plans down the line to vegetate those basins or are they more for conveyance?
Liz?
They're, yeah, I was, sorry, I was jumping in there. They're more just a conveyance and volume management item. As it is currently, as Eduardo alluded to, the existing actually basin, if you will, and I'm going to sneak back up here to a better view if I can, this one doesn't have the grading on it. There's actually kind of a hump, if you will, in the center here, a high point where sediment has collected. These pipes coming under the roadway as well have a lot of sediment, filling them and at the inlet and outlet. So part of this will actually clean those out, which will help the actual swell itself function better than it does currently.
So the, the pipes that are underneath the access road back there, are those going to be cleaned out and then is, is this conveyance system then actually managing stormwater on the adjacent property as well or on the other side of the roadway?
So yes, there is a, a bit of a low point here. It's not very defined, but there is runoff that collects from the roadway and part of this adjacent property here and then flows into the existing swell. That will be maintained. These are concrete pipes that run under the roadway and those will be maintained and actually we're grading right up to them to clear those out so that the conveyance of anything collected over here on the upstream side of the pipes will, will move through this new system we have proposed.
Okay.
Yes, we, we will do that and actually we already did that on the other side, the pipes going on the Eagle Road. So those were already cleaned out. There was a lot of sediment in those two, so we're going to do the ones on the left side of the diagram as well.
Okay, great, thank you. And really just my last comment is, in terms of the, the phasing for the plan sets, I would support a temporary or interim plan set that would show any kind of grading and building specifications that you would be proposing for that interim phase and then the final phases as well, just so that our township staff and engineers can be on the same page with you as you transition from the phasing, since obviously this is very important that we continue the operations of the pump stations and continue the, the site remediation. So, you know, whatever, whatever kind of arrangement our township staff and engineers can work out with you to facilitate that, I would be in support of. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Maggie. Jack, you around? Okay, David?
Um, the comments tonight have been very helpful. I'm going to defer to any further comments for now.
Okay, Rob?
Yeah, I think some of the questions were already answered, but I'll, I'll bring them up again in the best interest of time. I'll be quick. The purpose of the building is a pump station and the purpose of the temporary building is to keep that pump station running. Josh?
Correct. Well, it's, it's a treatment plant and then the pumps, the pumps all exist within the different wells and collection trenches that we have, but yes, that is, it is a groundwater treatment plant, a waste, like a wastewater treatment plant and the temporary structure is, is protecting that.
Yeah, and if I remember correctly, you had mentioned the last time that the equipment that's in there is pretty heavy duty stuff.
Correct.
Yep, and you're going to knock down that building that's there and you're going to try to accommodate as best as you can that existing system that's running. Any downtime associated with that and what impact would that have on the purpose of that pumping station?
I will, so I'll just briefly say this and then Eduardo, we can expand on it more because it's part of their work. We originally had intended to keep the plant running while we built the expanded components. At this time, what we're planning to do, what Eduardo's planning to do is to bring in a temporary treatment system that will be housed completely externally from this. And the, the only downtime that should be experienced is the amount of time where we need to basically disconnect the utilities that serve the existing plant and, for example, like the running wa-, like the, the water service and things like that in order to provide the necessary components for the, the much smaller temporary plant that will be there. And then once that's up and running, everything on the inside can be demolished, scrapped, removed carefully.
Okay.
Yeah, right, yeah, so just like he said, we're going to be running a temporary system, which actually is going to have a, you know, a little bit higher capacity than, you know, what's there right now. And like you say, you know, there's going to be probably downtown in between, you know, the time that we actually get up the temporary system running because we're going to have to have some of the lines going to the treatment plant now, you know, connected to the temporary system. So there might be, you know, a few days or a week that it's going to be down, but you know, after that, we're going to be running everything through the temporary treatment system.
Okay, and the last question I have is regarding the streetscape improvements that all the other properties are kind of committed to, and I was curious if that was going to be taken into consideration for this.
Uh, yes, so that would be part of my program's work. I don't think that it's even something that would be possible under, with the removal funds. Eduardo could clarify that. But yes, from our last conversation with, I, I understand the, amongst many things, how important the, the frontage, the frontage requirements are. So we've already preliminarily come up with, I think, a design, like some preliminary stuff that I think can meet our security needs and also meet the appearance requirements as well. And that will be embodied in the, the finals, like the final site condition phase two design.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Chuck, ready?
Yeah, thank you so much. You're doing all of this work out of curiosity, since I remember when National Womanizing was sitting over there. How long, how many more years do you anticipate that we're going to be in this process?
The treatment, how long will the treatment plant be running?
Yes.
I, I would estimate several more decades.
Oh my God.
The, the challenge is that we have contamination that permeated the subsurface and is still present, even though a large amount has already been pumped out and the plume is shrinking, like the plume, the groundwater plumes are shrinking, but there are very high concentrations that we've identified beneath our property and the adjacent properties in the, in the, what we call deep bedrock. It's really not that deep, it's a couple hundred feet, but all the product that is present in those cracks or that has been soaked into that rock over time, it takes just as long to extract it, if not longer, through the process that we're using right now with the, the, basically pumping, pumping the water.
So I'm 70 years of age and it ain't going to happen in my time.
I am, not unless you are going to be in the Guinness Book.
Right.
If you're intending to make it into the Guinness Book, then maybe, maybe.
Gotcha.
Maybe.
No, I understand.
Yeah.
I just was curious as to how long we're talking about. So this is something that is critical for the township.
Correct. And I would say, oh, sorry, go ahead, I didn't mean that wrong.
No, no, please, finish.
I would say that there are several, the, the groundwater, if, area of groundwater contamination is shrinking. The area that we addressed as part of the, the recreation open space area that's further down, it was a secondary source area.
Right.
That area has been remediated. The groundwater appears to be al- almost cleaned up there, if not completely, and the plume is shrinking. So I, I envision that eventually we'll have a much more compact area of contamination, but it will always be challenging to get those.
But it's always good, in that basic area where this particular plan is standing, we are going to have a 30 to 50 year program, right?
Correct.
That's what I thought too, and I just wanted to clarify that so we all understand that we are working as a community, as a state and as a federal government to remediate this problem. That said, I just want to make certain that, that you understand that we in Haverford Township are not trying to stand in your way, but what we are asking you to do is to help us as a community meet our required goals to, to act in the best interest of our community. So when we, when Angelo asks you what's going to happen here or there, he's, he's asking those questions on behalf of all of us. And that's all I wanted to say. And I also wanted to point out that I know you're doing the best you can for our community. So thank you.
Thank you. And I would, I don't think anybody's trying to stand in our way. I, I view this as a complete collaborative effort and everybody who's involved, we, everybody needs to bring up the things that they're concerned about and let everybody know what each party's trying to do so we all know where each other stands and so we can know where we're all working from so that we can move forward on the same page.
I a hundred percent agree. I want to point out that you don't have to call us all guys because we do happen to have a number of women on our, on our commission, so maybe the word guys is a word we don't need to use anymore.
Uh, I appreciate that and I will say, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate your time.
We're just news.
I can't speak for the women on the planning commission, but I will say that I personally consider guys to be a neutral term.
Okay, I don't.
Thank you, Chuck.
Thank you.
Uh, Jack, one more time, you there? Okay.
Angelo, this is David. Could I come back for just a second?
Sure.
Um, I think we covered some of this last time, but Charleston's reminding me of some of the concerns. I just wanted to confirm, there are no emissions from the building itself. This is all processing emissions from elsewhere. Is that correct?
Correct, yes, there's no, there are no air emissions. There is a contingency where if we had to install a certain additional treatment component on the plant, that an airstripper might be needed as well. We have never needed that previously for any iteration of the plant, but if we were to find that that would be necessary, then that would require additional development and air permit, like an air permit.
That would be for vapor issues?
It would be, yeah, so essentially, yeah, so essentially there can be a byproduct that's created through the treatment process. There's certain contaminants that we have more, higher concentrations of and there's some contaminants which are no longer above our cleanup standards based upon our current pumping regime, but with the additional, and when, and when those components that we were using or, or operating, we, we potentially could have generated vape, volatile organic compounds that would need to be stripped off because otherwise they would saturate, saturate the carbon units that are used now. One of the main components of the treatment plant is two carbon vessels. So with the way our current regime pumps, we are not above those cleanup standards, but with the new recovery wells that we'll be putting in, you could always hit another pocket of that type of contaminant. And if we had to bring something new online, we could potentially have to look at an airstripper.
That said, now you don't have or perceive vapor problems.
Correct.
And what about effects on drinking water? Your sense is there is no effect on the drinking water now?
No, there's def-, I mean, the, the groundwater that's contaminated should not be drank in any way, but all of the potable drinking water in the area is not generated from the aquifers that are beneath. It's all, I believe it's mostly surface water provided, but from a, our goal is to, our cleanup goals are based upon drinking water standards, so the groundwater that we are addressing now is not acceptable for potable use.
And how, how are you filtering the, the, what is the existing filters? Are they carbon filters?
There's, it's a multi-step process. There is flocculation, there's settling tanks, flocculation initially.
I'm sorry, what's flocculation? Sounds good.
Yes, um, there, you know, there, there, we, we use some different additives, polymers in order to, a lot of what we are addressing are, is adhered to the solid particles that are in the groundwater. And so settle, addressing the solids, we generate a lot of sludge that gets disposed of off-site. Whatever doesn't come out in the sludge and is dissolved in the water is primarily treated with carbon units, yes.
And you kind of anticipated my next question, which is where does all this go? Where do the filters go?
So the carbon get, the carbon is, is pumped out when it becomes, there's a lead and a lag unit and those are reversed as necessary for backwashing. We also have sand filters. When that stuff becomes saturated, then that is changed out with one of our subcontractors and the sludge that we generate is dewatered on site. The water goes back through the treatment process and then the sludge is disposed of at a hazardous waste landfill.
Where's that?
I knew you were going to ask me, I cannot remember, I'm sorry, I should know this. In my defense, I should know that.
I think that goes to Lancaster County.
Is that where it goes? Okay, yes, yeah. Right now, the plant operation is, is still under DEP. The Pennsylvania DEP took over operation in 2013, which is why it's not off the top of my head with regards to which facility they send that to.
That it, David?
That's it. There's always more.
Okay, my turn. Your waiver requests, okay? Ordinance requires that any waivers be accompanied by a, a written request indicating why the waiver is appropriate. Uh, ordinance requires that any waivers be accompanied by a a uh written request indicating why the waiver is appropriate. So in your response to the Township Engineers Review Letter, you should identify the reasons for your waiver request. If you feel that a traffic study is not warranted because this property isn't going to generate any additional traffic, then it would be appropriate to ask for a waiver of that requirement uh because of that fact. Okay? Um. Just wanna it reiterate how important those Eagle Road design standards are to us and the township. And I know we talked about that before. Um, comment number eighteen in the Township Engineers Review Letter talks about open space. And I don't know whether or not, I don't see much of an opportunity here to provide thirty percent of whatever lot area is 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 open space. But there is an option to uh pay a fee in lieu of that open space retirement. But again, I don't know if that's in your budget if if whoever's paying this bill is gonna be willing to pay that fee in lieu of. So if that's something you you need, you think you deserve a waiver for, then make sure you include that in your response. And there's a couple of engineering suggestions, ideas you might wanna consider in regards to the stormwater management. And uh Liz, you might be able to understand these a little bit better. The area um in the northwest corner where the two trailers are in that paved area, is that a very active area? You have a lot of activity in that area?
Uh, well, I guess, you know, could you define activity?
Well, I I I'm I'm thinking that um that's that shaded area is crushstone, you said?
Yes.
Right. What's what's in the trailers?
That's a, there are, right now, there are two office trailers and uh there is a one uh trailer that we use uh for storage of our tools.
Okay, all right. Would it be possible to put some of your stormwater management in that area and uh capture it before it crosses underneath the access road and goes into the rest of your uh stormwater facilities? So you're basically compensating for some of the additional uh impervious that you're adding to the main site? That's just an idea to consider. And the second thing is the the type of units you're using for the storage. There are the semi-circular units. Um, and I don't know, Liz, if you're familiar with the with a product called Storm Tank. But it looks like an egg crate. It's rectangular. And and basically you can get, you can reduce the footprint of the underground system by as much as thirty percent by going to a rectangular unit as opposed to a semi-circular unit. So it looks pretty tight in there. It looks like a lot of those uh stormwater features are really close to the building. So you might be able to to minimize the amount of uh area that the stormwater management system takes up by by thinking about of a a different type of unit. Uh, just an idea.
Sure, we'll definitely look at that.
Yeah, they and they're they're, the sizes of those units are basically the same as what you're proposing. They're thirty-six inches wide and eighteen inches high and they they come in different lengths. So it it's, I think you get a little bit more bang for your buck as far as volume goes. Uh, that's, that's basically, I I mean, there's a lot of other things too. For instance, the the zoning table, when you look at the zoning table, some of the values in the zoning table, they don't appear to be consistent with what the plan shows. For instance, the rear yard setback is forty-some feet is listed. And it looks to be more like two hundred and some feet. So just make sure that the the information in the notes and in the and the zoning tables and things like that are consistent with what the plan shows.
And this is and then and this is Chuck Reardon, this is Chuck Reardon saying that Angelo Capuzzi and his little finger knows more than I know about planning in my whole life. So this is a man that you should be tapping because he will help you.
Okay, thank you, Chuck.
True story.
All right. And one other thing to remember, guys, I think this plan was reviewed as a preliminary plan. And final plan requirements are 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 a little more numerous than than what we usually look at in preliminary plans. So make sure when you're doing your ordinance check, you're looking at the final plan requirements and not just the review letter. Because there might be things that come up in the final plan that aren't part of a preliminary plan application. And I'm just saying this so you don't get any surprises next time you submit a plan and there's new comments that you didn't see before. And that's all I have to say. And does anybody else on the board have anything they wanna add? You folks have a lot of work ahead of you and you only have two weeks to do it. So good luck with that. And hopefully we'll see you back in April.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate all the input and the quick turnaround.
All right, um. Liz, can you give us our screen back? Thank you. Okay. Good to see everybody. Jack, are you still here? No, okay. All right. So move, moving along, I I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut anybody off. You guys have anything else you wanna add or any thoughts or anything like that on this thing? I I mean, personally, I think we gotta do the best we can to try to move this as long as quickly as possible, considering the critical nature of the operation out there.
Amen.
Okay. All right, last item on the agenda is minutes from our reorganization meeting on uh back in January. And I'll make a ma- I'll make a motion that we uh approve those minutes as written.
Second.
I have a motion in second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? No, nobody, okay. Who's down? Who's Michael?
I am the property owner that enjoys all of the site.
Okay, you're just did, listening for interest purposes?
Well, I was in the first part of the meeting, thirteen fifteen Lawrence Road.
All right.
And that was an emergency call, but I'm listening because this is pretty new to me since I own most of the properties back there and no one quite informed me. But we are in discussions with Josh and a few other people um with about the traffic and what's gonna happen back there in the waterfall.
Okay, cool, all right.
No big deal.
Okay, and we didn't beat up Dennis, too bad. So don't worry about that.
I didn't catch, did I get approved or I didn't get approved?
Nah, we we recommended approval. You got for easy.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
We'll get you next time, Michael.
Thank you. Look forward to it.
Okay, uh. Anybody wanna add anything before we adjourn? No? Okay, I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
I'll second.
Maggie seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? No, okay. Well, thanks, everybody. Good meeting. We'll see you in a month.
Stay well.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.
Good night, everyone. Good night.
Night, night.